All right. Okay, good evening, everyone for coming tonight to the February 25th, 2025 Town of Oakland Commission Meeting. If everybody could please stand for the pledge and invocation. Hey, Lise.
Okay, roll call Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Ramos, Vice Mayor Satterfield, Mayor Taylor, and Commissioner McMullen is not here, but we have a quorum.
Okay, so a couple of items here. First is proclamations, two proclamations. And these proclamations are honoring the lives of two people that really meant a lot to this town. One was former Mayor Curtis Massey and the other one was Geraldine Thompson. I do know that Geraldine Thompson was a really big advocate for the town and helped us get many appropriations for the town. So we're going to miss them tremendously. So I'm going to go ahead and start with Mayor Curtis Massey's. Whereas Curtis Massey was a developed devoted leader visionary and dedicated member of the Oakland community who made history in 1975 as the Town of Oakland's first black mayor. And whereas Curtis Massey served his community with integrity and commitment during his tenure as mayor, leading a town of fewer than 700 residents and observing his peaceful, peaceful and quiet nature values he cherished throughout his life. And whereas even after his services, Mayor Curtis Massey continued to contribute to the growth and well being of Oakland by providing counsel to the elected officials and town staff, ensuring that the town remained a place of prosperity and community pride. And whereas Curtis Massey was born on July 12th, 1926 in Orlando, Florida, as the seventh of seven sons to Frank and Flossie Nelson Massey, and he proudly served his country in the military during World War II. And whereas after returning from service, he settled in Tildenville, completed his high school education and established a successful career in the citrus industry, eventually founding Curtis Massey Harvesting, a citrus transport company that employed over 770 individuals and contributed significantly to the local economy. And whereas Curtis Massey demonstrated his unwavering commitment to his community by providing financial support and opportunities to those in need, following in the footsteps of his father Frank Massey, by holding mortgages for black residents when banks would not, ensuring many could achieve the American dream of homeownership. And whereas he was a man of deep faith, a devoted family man and a community pillar who encouraged truth, integrity and service in all aspects of life. And whereas Curtis Massey found great joy in retirement, enjoying fishing, training bird dogs and taking cruises, embracing a well earned life of leisure after lifetime of service. And whereas Curtis Massey departed this life on January 29th, 2024, at the age of 98, leaving behind a legacy of leadership, generosity and commitment to the people of Oakland and be gone. Now therefore I Shane Taylor on behalf of the Town of Oakland Commission do hereby honor and celebrate the life of Curtis Massey, recognizing contributions, sacrifices and unwavering dedication to his community. May his legacy continue to inspire future generations to serve with some same compassion, leadership and vision. So, Curtis Massey. And then for Senator, State Senator Geraldine Thompson, we will read this one and there will be three proclamations going, one for the town, one to the family and one to Tallahassee to be read as well. Whereas the Town of Oakland mourns the passing of State Senator Geraldine Thompson, a distinguished leader, educator and advocate whose tireless work in the Florida Legislature left an enduring impact. And whereas Geraldine F. Thompson dedicated nearly 20 years of service in the Florida House and Senate, champion education, healthcare, civil rights and the preservation of black history. And whereas she was instrumental in establishing Orlando's Wells Built Museum of African American History and Culture, preserving the region's rich black heritage. And whereas she was an accomplished author, publishing Black America Orlando, highlighting the achievements of African Americans in Central Florida. And whereas Senator Thompson was a devoted educator with Orange County Public Schools and later Valencia Community College where she served for 24 years as assistant to the president and directed the college's equal opportunity office, advocating for fairness and exclusion. And whereas beyond her professional life, she was a devoted wife, mother, grandmother and great grandmother, whose compassion shaped countless lives. And whereas Senator Thompson was the only state elected official who supported the Town of Oakland's state appropriations request every year since 2012. Whereas the Town of Oakland honors her extraordinary contributions, leadership and dedication to equity, fairness and opportunity for all and commits to upholding her legacy through continued advocacy and service. Now therefore I Shane Taylor on behalf of the Town of Oakland Commission do hereby honor the life and legacy of State Senator Geraldine F. Thompson, encourage all citizens to reflect on her lasting impact, striving to continue her work and making our community stronger, more just and more inclusive. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda contains minutes from the 21125 Town Commission Regular Meeting and contract for the DOAH Local Hearing Officer for the School Zone Enforcements. Any questions or comments on those? No, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. Second. Y'all in favor? All right, okay. Other policy matters, Oakland Exchange, just the replat of lots five and six of racetrack and Brad Quinones with Wade Trim is here tonight. Hello, Brad.
Again, I'm Brad Quinones with Wade Trim, serving as a contracted town planner. I just have a very short presentation for y'all tonight. I don't have a PowerPoint or anything. As the mayor said, what's before you this evening is for the approval of the replat of lots five and six of the racetrack Remington Platte. The reason for this, as you all will recall, back in December, the Town Commission, you approved the plan development, development agreement for the development of the Oakland Exchange Office Complex on this property for 37,000 square feet. This is the next step in that process, which was reflected in that development agreement that this would then be coming to you next. So what's happening, instead of being two separate lots like was originally plotted, they're combined into one development site, as shown on their site development plan that the Town Commission has already approved. It also is eliminating some internal easements and things that aren't required anymore since now it's all one development site as opposed to two. Just so the Commission is aware, the Town Attorney had some minor changes that she provided yesterday to adding to the notes on the plat. They've been addressed, the plat that's through your signature night do reflect those changes from the Town Attorney. Basically, all they're doing is it's reflecting the three development agreements around this property, the original and the amendments that have been done. There's a de-easement on the property and there's an old transmission guy wire from Florida Power that impacts the property, but those are now reflected on the plat for the mayor's signature. Mr. Wayne King with JW2 is here. There he is. If you have any questions of him, he is the developer. We have to answer any question.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the table? Easy. Okay. Anybody from the audience like to speak on the topic? Okay, all right, we'll bring it back here and I'll entertain a motion, please. A second. All right, all in favor? All right, okay. Yeah, thank you, Brad. All right, public forum, this is where we open it up to the public that may have a question or comment on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Is there any takers tonight for the public forum? Oh, hello. Thank goodness.
What's your name, John? Um, again, just to readdress the progress on the dust mitigation. I know that there's been a couple more sample roads done. They seem to turn out really well. Just wondering if that's, if we're at a point where we can go ahead, does the, does the, you know, does the full body of the Commission agree that this is what we're going to do and it's acceptable and is there any other stumbling blocks from proceeding or?
No, John, I think, and I'll have Mike talk a little bit about it, but from what I've seen and maybe you guys as well, and especially Petrus and what was done there and Hall, I'm pleased with it. I received, I don't know how many comments and emails about positive things. We are, it will eventually break down. Where, you know, it looks like it's a uniform asphalt road because that's the machine they put it down with. But eventually, you know, it's going to break down, turn a little more gray, that black will come out of it and stuff and spread out. But from what I've seen and what I've driven on and I wasn't breaking the law, I was going pretty quick that it didn't kick up really anything. Now, as far as timing and other roads that will be done, and I don't know if anybody else on the table here wants to, wants to talk about it. Mike Parker can probably tell us a little more about whatsoever. Yeah. Anybody else have any comments on the?
Comments. Yeah, the gully, what they did, something that we do, see the, we compare it right. Petrus, we can Hall Avenue, both have that recycled asphalt that may, eventually it's gonna get the dark black color off. It has, it had it on those streets, residents tell me it has a little bit of a smell, but time is going to go away. And then we have the dirt, dirt that a lot of people don't like and some still embrace the historic view. Cross Street, we have one more incomplete road from, from, I'm sorry, Oakland Avenue on Cross Street going north to Petrus, which is that one eighth of an inch gray gravel, one inch gravel that they started, they didn't complete it. It was supposed to be complete as another sample. That, I want to have that on the list of these two samples plus dirt road. People give their opinions on it. I'm not really fully aware of that. Then, following, once we get all the samples the way we thought last year, are we going to create, you know, those choice again, voting or about a poll again, or have a committee? I would like to see a committee go out there. I've had already people saying, we don't want to lose a historical view of our streets that we had. They don't want the dust. So we got to either, we have six miles correct to do. Okay, five miles. It all have to be one style. First time around, if you guys remember, it was almost like a split, one third, one third, one third, one third wanted asphalt, one third wanted some sort of recycled product, other than the dirt road and one third wanted to leave it alone. I like to get all three of these, put them back on, you know, Facebook for people to come look at them and then find out, you know, what the new, as if, I like that recycled asphalt. It does look nice. It does, you know, oily, it does have smell. I want to see complete street, gray gravel, have some of that recycled asphalt. We already have Star Street at this flat and let them redo it. So this is the first time I've heard gravel being an option. It's, and I know, and I know there are some residents here who've gone ahead and done their own gravel, granite, whatever road work. My question is, what authority do they have on their own to decide this is the product down? I know where Tub intersects Vic, that was a mess. And it's still kind of a mess. It's dangerous to ride a bike on. It's not going to hold up. So I'm a little confused because in all the meetings, no one talked about gravel. Not gravel. Granite, whatever. So all the neighbors on Cross Street, Kathy, Chris, they're all wanting to see that gravel continue. It's not, I'm sorry, granite. Who initiated this? I did. I initiated, yeah. So you have a personal interest in? I brought it up as one of examples to Andy. How come it was never discussed? It wasn't discussed, he's not here no longer. No, I've been coming here since last year talking about roads. Can we make that an option? Look, you guys run the town. I want to know if there's agreement amongst the commissioners and the mayor to come up with a plan to mitigate the dust. And more surveys and back and forth and more samples. At this point, I think it's a waste of time and money. We get a lot of calls and a lot of, can they want? Let's talk about it.
And again, it would be my, my opinion is if we could agree on, on, on one for a majority of town, that's probably the way it should go. Because if we start doing this road is this and then this road is this, we're going to probably be in a mess down, down the road when as stuff does start to get redone that way. So if it's not uniform, and again, it's my opinion that we might get in a little bit of trouble that way down. I personally like what we've done here, Petrus, myself, and I had brought up a committee to kind of look into which way to go, you know, last meeting. But if we could all agree on it and we can get enough people to kind of give some comments back, I don't think social media is the way to do it. Because you don't get the, you don't get the impact back, the town in the right way with social media. We ruin mailers or something, so we can get something back or some way like that. We can really get an opinion on more than 100 people out of 5,000. That was just a split, you know, people on dirt roads wanted to keep dirt, people on, on the concrete road wanted to keep concrete, really didn't do a lot. But if we can get more participation, make sure that we're getting the right way, I think we should probably go.
I would agree that we need to find one solution. I think maintaining multiple options would be costly for the town. I did have the experience to drive down the new recycled asphalt product and I think it's a great thing. I would like to maybe see it for a little bit, just to make sure that it's going to end up the way we want it to be, you know, give it a little time. I think we had some experience with some of the other products that we put them down initially, thought they were going to be okay. And then they ended up not being after a little bit of time. So to make sure we make the right long term decision that's good for the town from a cost standpoint and a servicing down the road standpoint that we, whatever option we choose, we live with it a little bit before we finalize that decision. But I would prefer that we need to have one solution rather than multiple options, just for cost effectiveness and maintenance down the road. But I'd like to hear what Mike Parker has to say.
Well, well, you know, ultimately. Sorry. Ultimately, it's up to the Commission to decide. But, you know, I just want to point out that the longer that we have the five miles of dirt roads or stone roads, you know, our road grader is 30 plus years old, that's going to have to be replaced. So I'm kind of, you know, I like the asphalt millings. I wasn't sold on it. I'll be honest with you at first, but it's, it's really turning out well. I think in the summer, as things warm up and it gets exposed to heat, it'll, it'll coalesce into more of a finished surface. Right now, it's, it's getting a little bit of sand and some leaves on it. You can, you can hardly tell the difference between it and the traditional dirt road. The travel is smoother, but again, it's up to you all how we want to proceed.
So just stunned by this gravel thing now, the granite. Do the citizens have a right to just put what they want on their road in front of their house? Is that done without discussion? Or I know that was the case that the Vic and Tub.
Yeah, I will say this, John, I know that the resident that put the gravel down behind his house, he was approached by the town to say, you know, you can't do that, you're not supposed to do that. No, on Sal's, if he and Andy had talked about it, putting it down as it, as an alternative method to try to see, I mean, the ultimate goal is to try to knock the dust down. Is that, and that's what we were trying to do and trying to find some different materials to do. For me, I, what I've seen is I like the recycled asphalt. That's, that's me. And I'm not really convinced solely that every single street needs the recycled asphalt. And I believe it could be used, especially on streets that get heavy travel. Petrus is a great example. You have the trail, you have the history center, and before a car drives down it, it just blew a dust cloud like crazy. So putting that down there, you know, it's cut down tremendously on that dust. You know, I know your street Vic with the cut throughs of golf carts and cars going from Oakland Park to the park or vice versa or whatever. Maybe that's a road you look at, try to do another one. But I don't, I'm not convinced that every single street is, needs to have the recycled asphalt. And that could save some money in the long run because there are some streets that are sand and a little bit of clay and they work out, they work out well. Henson Street, that is between Star and Winners Landing, that street's scheduled to be paved. Just because, and the reason for that is because it's a heavily used street for school. There's, in the morning, there is so many cars that go up and down that street for that. And I don't think we're all here on the table are advocating to pave all the streets. That's not what we want to do. And that's not, it's not the direction to go, but trying to find that source that can do that. That's what we want. So we want to try to.
Well, again, I thought we were at a point where the decision for that product, the asphalt fines was the way to go. And that there'd be some kind of a schedule for looking at the roads and figuring out, planning what's next. Tonight, I hear, you know, that granite's in the mix.
So I think, you know, there's obviously budgets for the year that have to be looked at to find out, okay, do we have, if we have money in the budget to do, how many more roads can we do for that, for that budget amount, you know, because you can't blow the budget. You might, and this may be something that's over a, it's over a year process. I guess, John, if you would, I would encourage you just to at least drive down to Cross. I personally haven't been to Cross. I didn't, you know, but now that I know, I think I'd, I'd go down there and just check it out and just see.
Recycled one over there on the top. We had so many, over and over and over. But this new one, obviously different. But in between those two, we put down. Who's we? Well, Andy, you know, I talked to Andy. The town paid for it? I paid. So as a private citizen, you funded your own grant. I said, Andy, this is an option. Everybody loved it on Cross Street. Say, we hadn't put down that new. I don't, I don't love it. We have not put that new. I don't love it. I don't love it. Tell me the ones on my street saying. It's not, it's not your street. No, the people on the street who live on the street and who drive on it said, this is like, this is going to be an option. When we're done with it, it could be an option. We did not have the recycled one yet. So are, we could keep the other one. Are they gonna, are they gonna agree to maintain it? No, what do you, who? The citizens that live on that product. I will maintain it. Yeah, that, that just disturbs me. That whole process. Wouldn't public.
Can we, can we on this table agree to have a decision maybe by the end of the next meeting? So that would be the first of March, the second Tuesday of March. I mean, we've got a lot of options that we've tried out there. We've tried the Lime Rock and the Sol Summit that Windermere had and everything. I think we probably have enough out there to kind of look and make a decision and then find out, you know, from that point, what, what roads need to be done? What, what critical roads that get used a lot? And number one, well, number one, how much money do we have? Okay, so you're not blowing the budget on stuff. You know, it is, if recycle granite or whatever is an option, let's, let's just keep an open mind and look at it and see what it does. I haven't seen it yet. So I don't, I can't intelligently speak on it. I do know what you're talking about behind on Vic Street with that guy. And I agree that it was just kind of put down loose there and wasn't compacted down or packed down or anything like that. And that may not be the option. That may not be the solution to whatever. But I think we're beyond the point where we can now make an intelligent decision. And I'd say we just bring this up at the next meeting, give people two weeks to go, hit those two areas. However, many areas you want to hit, you got Vic, you got Petrus, or you got Hall, or you got Cross off of Oakland.
See, the previous ones were even the one that. The shuffle and not being here, Andy's no longer here. It's not on the people, we could take it off. The price may be in budget, not to wait 10 years. It's fine. But you'll determine that. I'm not an expert of that.
So your other point, John, will be yes, there will be a plan on how much.
Sure.
And some that be a change point that maybe some don't need them. By the time we get to the end of our process and whatever takes five years, them might need it too. We don't know that. Yeah, I'll give you an example. It's my side of Daniels. It's still that old that we had all those years ago and it doesn't bring up dust on that side. But then again, there's only two houses that go there and people that go to the park. Once they open that Riley Farm, that might change too. So that's the type of stuff that'll end up getting tweaked to go along. But as far as getting it together, by all means, there will be a plan on what street goes, when and how long, you know, that.
Okay, good. Good. And then obviously building into the budget, the cost of this over the years.
Absolutely.
Um, just one more thing briefly, not related. Many of my neighbors have come to me for some reason. And they're, they're really complaining about the speed of the cars down Vic. They've on their own put out their children's lines and, you know, bigger signs. So I'm asking council to come up with some kind of plan to enforce the speed limits on Vic. I don't think there's even a speed limit sign. It's not, no, it's not. Um, I'm not sure the town residents necessarily know what the unmarked speed is in town. You guys know?
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, okay. So maybe a little enforcement, a little social media. Go a long way to help people realize, you know, we've got to respect the children and the neighborhoods and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Totally separate. Okay, all right. Thank you, guys.
We'll do that. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Hello, Joe.
Jill Cox, 301 Walker Street. I'm just following his comment on the survey. I know a while back, people talked about adding pickleball courts and people that lived around it were not happy. And I, and then I was talking to somebody that doesn't want the dirt roads paved. I said, but you don't live on a dirt road. So you don't know what it's like. I don't live near the park. So I don't hear the pickleball. So go ahead and then put more courts in. You understand it's hard to have somebody in Riley Farms tell me they got, they're going to get concrete streets, that they love our charm when you don't live on it. And it was different when there wasn't UPS and Kroger and Walmart. And just that, having a survey, I think is kind of hard when you don't live on a dirt road to have a stay. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Joe. And I will say that the times have changed. I mean, there's a lot more traffic and a lot more home deliveries now on the street. We've talked about that before. So, you know, all those have to be taken into account, but. But I think next week, we can have a, we can have a decision and a direction to go on how we want to proceed and figure out, you know, which ones and how much and how far can we go with what we have. Oh yeah. Yep, you're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, none, we'll close the public hearing and town managers' reports.
So just wanted to let everybody know, we start our charter review committee meetings next week, March 3rd, March 31st, April 7th and April 21st from 3:00 to 5:00. Those are the ones that are scheduled so far. Again, there's a charter over on the table, if you want to take one, and if you have comments, just let me know, I'd be glad to bring those forward. I did talk to the Florida League of Cities today, they're gonna be at our, at least our first meeting, if not more, to help us, you know, on their side, comparing jurisdictions and things that we might have questions about. So I think between them and having our attorneys there, we'll have some good guidance. So I appreciate everybody that's volunteered and looking forward to getting to work.
That it?
And we will be posting the Assistant Public Works Director position shortly, so, you know, if you know anybody that might be a good fit, send them Melody's Way.
Parker, do you have anything?
The only thing I wanted to say is thanks for the opportunity to come back to work. I postponed my retirement now, and so anyway, yeah. Yesterday afternoon, I had a phone call from the St. Johns River Water Management District reviewer, who is reviewing our latest grant submission. By the way, that's $2.9 million grant submission. And I took away from that meeting that we are looking pretty good with that, so I think, I think it's very positive.
That's for the alternative?
Yeah, alternative water, yeah. That's all.
How about you Lou, anything good? You gotta use the mic, Lou. You gotta use the mic. Brad.
Oh, oh. Nothing new for me, it's my second time here, so. I'll try to find something for the next one.
Okay.
So why don't you tell them about your Facebook Live experience?
Oh, I'm, yeah.
So Facebook Live is something we're trying to develop so we can have more communication, community. We've actually, if you're not on Facebook, by the way, please get on Facebook with us. We're trying to be out in the community for you when you can't be there. We've realized there's a lot of people that can't be at this meeting. We're really gonna kind of up that part of it. Highlight some things that we do in the community and really bring it to life. If you have any suggestions, I'm open to suggestions as well. The history in this town is amazing, I think that's one story that really definitely needs to be told.
Thanks Lou. Chief, you got anything back there?
Welcome Lou, welcome.
Yes, Lou. Nothing, nothing from you, chief, okay. All right, we'll bring it back here to the table, how about you, Commissioner Ramos? You're good?
So I had the privilege, and I consider it a privilege, to spend some time with Mike Parker yesterday morning, driving around town and learning about the infrastructure that the town has worked so hard to put together. We are very lucky to have Mike pulling his resignation back and staying with us longer, because he is an amazing supporter of this town. And spent a couple hours, Lou joined us, and we drove around and looked at all the different infrastructure, the sewer, that we talked about, the alternative water and the grants and things that we've done, and it's really amazing to see what our little town has done so much with grants, which Mike has really spearheaded. And so, again, I'm just trying to educate myself more on the workings of the town. I just warned the chief that Police Department's on my list to try to spend some time with and just to learn more about the town. But it was awesome to ride around with Mike and that knowledge and experience. I probably should have bought him lunch, honestly.
First of all, it's on my list, not. We had talked about that book, Oakland, the early years, and mine has disappeared. And I found a digitized copy of it. So my thought is maybe this, like, talk to Lou about it, but we hit that on a thumb drive and bring it in, maybe we can find somebody that can make books out of them. They'd be perfect to sell at the Heritage Center, Cross Street. It's not so much for making money, but as long as we can break even with it, a lot of people ask that book, it really is a cool book. They're gone, I mean, just you can't find them. So I'll bring it in, so if we're okay with that, I'm looking. Or even digitized. Those that like to read on the computer.
Sounds awesome plan, yeah, all right. Two things for me, last night, one of the Facebook Lives, I hope you haven't seen it yet, had a great presentation, we had two of them actually, the week prior. Was with the artist, Mike, Commissioner Satterfield, myself attended those. One was a great presentation by the two artists whose works are on display in the Heritage Center. And just, they were Disney Imagineers, so they had some great stories they told. And then last night was really good, and it was Being Bear Aware, FWC was here, a contractor who had a great presentation, and I think you can still find those on the Facebook. Yeah, okay. So you can find that all on Facebook, and she had a wonderful presentation of that. You know, we have the bear that's roaming around town, and I think she said that maybe it's not just one. Maybe there's a couple of bears maybe running around town, so it's got some good tips and advice to try to deter them. We can't get rid of them, we just gotta learn to live with them, is what we gotta do. And the second thing I wanted to bring up was on the table here, is a, maybe next week, next meeting, we talk about how we want to pursue the town manager's position, if we want to go out to the market, or if we're satisfied with what we have here. We'll all let, maybe we'll have some decisions and make a decision on that next week. Are you guys good with that? Two weeks, yeah, the 11th, March 11th, yeah. Other than that, if he may, he's got nothing else, sorry, Justice's not here, but we'll call it a day. Thank you, everybody.
Hearts and minds are satisfied at 7:30 10 p.m.?
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.